Want to do stuff like that.
It's got twenty readings. I mean, did you ever hear of the Little Gem Winery?
I've never heard of that.
It's on twenty-three.
The what's right?
Little Gem Winery, and it looks, unless they're wrong here, just off Highway twenty-three. And we're wrote twenty-three four.
Yeah.
I never heard of it.
I haven't heard of it. But I made it out, because I thought, oh, where's Vulcan? And I thought, Little Gem Winery.
Is it in Vulcan?
No, but it's on off-highway twenty-three.
There's a new winery down by.
Maybe it's just by Monarch.
It is down by Monarch.
Yeah, yes.
Right by the potato farm, right next to the potato farm there, there's a new winery.
There's a write-up, because it's, it's, it's not wine, it's, it's, it's not grapes, it's not that kind of berry.
At seven o'clock, we'll call and meet and order.
Any additions to the agenda? If not, somebody wished to move the agenda? Okay, thank you, Richard. Any questions or discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question, those in favor. Opposed, seeing none, it's carried. As you can see, Will's away, he's out to work tonight, so.
You know.
Moving on to the agenda, or the regular meeting at council for March twenty-fifth. Any heirs, missions, questions? If not, Judy? Thank you, Judy. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question, those in favor. Closed, seeing none, it's carried. Okay, well, we're blessed tonight to have a presentation here from Ursula, so you can come up and have the floor air.
Wish you good. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, it's been a long since I've been here, so I thought it was time to show my face again. So, I just wanted to let you know what we've been up to in the last year and a bit. So, we have had a big board change, as you know, last time I spoke to you, we were in the process of making that happen. It did get all approved, and we were able to make the change, and our board went from eighteen people to nine, actually eight, which was wonderful. And we've had a few changes in the board even since then, so the new board started officially April first. I provided a little update, some pictures and stuff. Yeah, so the new board started April first. Since September, between September and January, we had about five board members leave, out of eight, which was a lot. And we had three new ones come in, one of which was a board member who had served before, so at least we have some of that continuity there before. And four of them were just too much on their plate, one had a conflict of interest, so, you know, typical thing that we see with all volunteers these days. And other than that, our office was recognized for three awards at our community futures symposium, which was really nice to see, love that. And one award was for our entrepreneurs with disabilities program. So this is an ongoing program that is actually not funded directly by our office, but from a separate fund, again federally funded. And any entrepreneur who self-identifies with a disability, and that can be physical, mental, anything, can participate in this program. And that gives, provides up to sixty hours of coaching free. And coaching can be anything from business plan coaching, to this part, education, financial, marketing. So we have several different coaches with different specialties, and we get not just one person, or sometimes more than one. So a great program, and we were the office who had the most peak lines in Alberta.
That's nice.
Yes, it's really nice. Other things, we, as you may know, community futures offices were one of the organizations providing the triple R F funds. The Royal Recovery Fund, which was the cousin, shall we say, to the SIBA program. So same amounts, same, almost same interest rates, or so it's cheaper. And, and again, it was a project that was really meant to fill the gaps in which our organizations between local mainstream provides. And then where often rural entrepreneurs fall through the gaps, because they can't access everything that's provided by the big banks and that kind of stuff. So, we ran that, had the same deadlines as SIBA, so January eighteenth was that magic date that everybody was supposed to repay unless they found the financing until March twenty-eighth. So we ended up having eighty-one percent of our loans payout completely. We refinanced, and I forgot to mention that earlier, we refinanced another, so we had a hundred and twenty-six loans total. And just to put this in perspective, in a good year, our office does about eighteen loans. We gave out a hundred and twenty-six loans in less than a year. Now, the background work wasn't as extensive as we do with the other loans, because it was a different loan program, but it still was a heck of a lot of work. And so, over these years, we have connected with our clients, have, like I said, about eighty-one percent payout completely, have another about seven percent refinanced. Another, I think, eight or nine percent on, I think our write-off is about five percent at this point in time, which is pretty amazing. Like our write-off today, it will get a little bigger still, but, you know, really, all things considered, those are pretty good numbers. What else? We, I have another cheat sheet we're doing. We still provide, I obviously have three legs that you're standing on, so we have the loan program, of course, which we're most known. We also have the programming that we do, and then we have coaching services, so all of that makes up what we provide. In terms of loan programs, we have still our regular loan programs. EDP clients get special interest rates, so I have to say right now, it's really special interest rate for them right now, because usually our interest rate is prime plus four and a half. Which would put us at eleven point nine percent right now, and we all, board and staff included, think that's highly wrong, and we really jeopardize the businesses with that kind of interest rate. The lowest we can go as per our funding contract is prime plus two percent, so that's what we're offering to every client right now, which is still a lot, being nine point two percent, but it's still better than eleven point nine, so, right? Take the low mercies as we can, so we are watching the interest rates, and eventually when they go down, we hope that, you know, obviously, of course, ours will go down as well, and that's not feasible. We provide assistance, actually, I'm going to stay with the loans just for a moment, so we have the regular loans, and then we also have another loan program, which I also forgot to talk about earlier, I met with Kim and Lex earlier. It's called the CGI, it's called the Capital Growth Initiative, and that was a funding program brought down by the province. And with that, it's particularly for entrepreneurs who identify as female. So, anybody identifying as female has access to that program. We shared the entire pot of money with all the human entrepreneurs, so all twenty-seven community futures offices in Alberta shared half of the pot, and A W E got the other half. So each office got about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for that. Our office decided instead of doing really big loans, we were going to cap it at about twenty thousand dollars per loan. And then a quarter of that is forgivable if they repay within the first five years, if they repay within five years, and the first six months are interest on repayments. So another great loan program, and we can keep giving that money out until it self-exhausts, right? And so, and we actually had a Vulcan client, I'm happy to say, who took advantage of that program, already paid us back ahead of time, so that was awesome, it was great to see. And we have, like I said, our regular loans, EDP loans, youth loans, youth has been increased, now used to be up to twenty-nine, because now thirty-four years of age, so we have a little bit wider range there. And again, usually they get a better interest rate, but right now it doesn't matter, because everybody's at the good interest rate, right? In terms of programming, we are still running our, like EDP, obviously, I just talked about that, the Entrepreneurs with Disabilities Program, we're still running DSS, which stands for Digital Service Squad. And that is again part of a program that is administered by the Business Link, and was Alberta, funded by the Alberta Government in part. And, and then the, what was it called? Digital Economy Program with the EP, yeah, that Alberta Government provided. And with that, we have an extra staff member that was able to fund out of that program, who provides one-on-one assistance for marketing. So business owners can come in, free of charge, get up to ten hours, free marketing assistance, like looking at their digital presence, where they at, when they need assist, when they need help. And they also provide three sixty photos, free of charge. And our staff will come here, so please stop spreading the word. For that matter, if you want to be up to date, like we will continue sending these things out on a more regular basis, I apologize, it's been very busy here. That said, if you're on social media, please follow us on Facebook or Instagram, that's a great way to stay abreast of what we're doing, and what kind of programs and things we have coming up. We collaborate with other organizations, such as the chambers very often, I would love to see Vulcan having a chamber. And, yeah, to bring things together, we collaborate with the Okatoks Chamber for the Small Business Week month, and did an event there. We collaborated with High River, Diamond Valley, and Okatoks Chambers to do something around the golf tournament that they did every year, and those kinds of things. And we would like to, and then we created another group called the Rec Group, and we would love to see some representation from Vulcan as well on that, which is the Regional Economic Collaboration. And the idea is that stakeholders who service business owners, entrepreneurs, collaborate, come together, exchange information, what's happening, where the neck of the woods, what's happening with us, make sure we don't duplicate. And instead, like referrals have really increased since we've got that group. It's modeled after another group that we have in Okatoks for about five or six years. And like I said, referrals increase, collaborations increase between groups, and it's a great initiative, as far as I'm concerned, we meet about every second month, and for an hour or two, and just do that exchange, and it's been a really great thing. Our office is also part of a group of offices that are looking at building internal, online. Learning management systems, so basically online courses, sorry, lost my train of thought the first time, online courses. So they will go around the business planning, you have an HR course already, so they're still in the process of being built, but that is something that we're collaborating with as well. And there are eighteen, so two-thirds of the offices in Alberta are part of that project, which is huge, which is great, seeing that every office is running independently, and every office likes to do their own thing. It's nice when we can actually get together and do all this together. We are also looking at another project for around exit planning, succession planning for businesses. Kim was awesome, I asked for letters of support, and I was saying, Kim and Mel's were like this, and I had my letter of support, and it was awesome. And it's about enhancing the awareness of what it takes to exit plan and providing resources for that. So we were actually going to start and hire somebody for that, for the grant funding, and then we found a CF office out of PC who has already done that. So now we're looking at partnering with them, because we don't want to be like the wheel that's already there, and apparently working really well, or grease and running really well. So we would like to, at this point in time, it looks like we'll be partnering, and we'll just apply for grant funding to actually get a good marketing campaign going, and really get the word out that, yes, we can help with that, too. So this office has an exit partner already on staff, or on commission, I should say, and he has lots of experience, and has done this for several years, and a kid, actually. And, yeah, hard to match that, right, so might as well take advantage of that, and it's very cost-effective, again. Usually, like for instance, a business valuation, if you're lucky, you look at three thousand dollars, and that's a cheap one, and like not a very thorough one. Up to fifteen thousand dollars, they ask you seven hundred and fifty dollars for it, so that's pretty. So we'll have that, and something to put on your calendars, if you feel like you want to drive down to Diamond Valley in October, we're going to host the Highland Hasselard. And so basically, we started that last year, we decided that really we wanted to showcase our clients, and give them a chance to showcase themselves, and network with other clients and that kind of thing. So we started last year by invitation only, this year we're opening it up to anybody who would like to come, we are going to have registrations, so we can, you know, budget for the food and all that stuff. But, yeah, if you're interested, October third, six o'clock, at the O'Clare Distillery in Longform, Turner Valley, it's on Diamond Valley, of course, right? And we would love to see you there, and you will have, like I said, some of our clients showcase what they do, and there's some cool ideas out there, if that's something of interest to you. And again, if you ever want to have more information, please contact us, please do contact through the website. Also, we will be, our fiscal year is March thirty-first, so we have to, by law, show, put our financial statements, as well as our performance reports, on the website. So if you ever want to look at what we are doing, and how we're doing number wise and all that stuff, then please have a look at the website, it's all there for your information. Do you have any questions for me?
Sounds like you guys have been quite busy.
We have, we have, yes, yes. All my staff, I think we need to have a year of actually pulling back, and I like to innovate, I like to figure out new things, and my staff is actually really giving me a slap on the head and saying, nope. We need, we want to say no, we need to have a quiet year.
Yeah, hopefully with another year under your belt, you know, hopefully with the board, you know, not having a big change again, you know, that's. To start off with, you know, changing direction with the board, and then all of a sudden, the board itself changes direction, is kind of a challenging process, I'm sure, so.
It, it took a lot of work, yeah, no, it worked probably a year and a half, yeah.
And unfortunately, I think that's part of the problem with a lot of these organizations, too, is trying to keep some degree of stability, but yet, you know, going in a different direction, it really makes a difference.
Well, I, I have to say, it was a wonderful change, because I have six very engaged board members now, and the discussions around the table are like night and day from before. Before, it was a lot of members that were there on the committee, and it wasn't a committee, it's a governing board, which is very, well, very similar to what you are doing, so it's a very different environment, and, yeah, it's been wonderful.
Yeah, we have heard of that a lot, like, you know, a lot of boards have issues where there are governance, or there are a policymaking board, or, you know, I mean. And trying to get their hands and their philosophies around those is sometimes difficult, especially as an elected official, because sometimes, you know, even, even, you know, your process sometimes, you know, is so different from, you know, municipal to, to, to board doubles. And trying to separate the two sometimes is hard, I'm sure, so.
Absolutely, and councillors are still very welcome on a board, they not excluded just as in the capacity as a private citizen. So they would, like, we have to, councillors on board both said, we have to imagine our place, surprise, but they both came there, and they were there as a private citizen. They didn't come with a councillor hat on, and, yeah, councillors, if you want to have something extra to do, you have three more openings.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Well, thank you very much for taking the time to come over.
You're welcome.
Both bring, you know, the administration and us up to speed on what's going on, so I appreciate it.
My pleasure, and I'm planning to do this on a regular basis.
I just wanted to point out before Ursula leaves as well, she's going to be back on May first to meet with the county, and we're also going to do some introductions internally, staff-wise, where we didn't have time today. So Chris and Rita are going to meet with Ursula, so that we can share that message of, you know, exactly what they do and how they think that it is, you know, people come to the front. Most of the time when they come to our front counter, they already have a plan in mind, so it's being able to share the resources that the futures have can go along nice for them, so we've got that platform for it.
Great, well, thank you very much, you can be curts.
I do, I have a few.
Do we have someone from?
I don't know. I can leave, I can leave a few, I have a few here, and actually, I have more in the car, so I can grab some from there. Let me grab some from the car, and I'll bring them in.
Sure.
Can I get back in this, it's so heavy.
Yes, of course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, thanks again. Okay, moving on, we corresponded some information, we have information from South Row, and. Any questions on that one? Okay, if not, the next one is the Alberta Regional Services Commission's Water Management Forces. Okay, moving on to the Alberta Muni's policy, political parties' members' message.
Like the way it was wrote.
You do like the way it was written? Yeah, there was, unfortunately, like in Mayor's Reeves, there was quite a hot, it was a hot topic.
I can see why.
Especially when you consider this, because the, most of the rural MLAs are not in favor of this at all. So they have to kind of sit there and say that they really weren't in favor, but yet their boss is, is kind of pushing it, so, but anyway, that was.
With this, do, as council, do we want to write a letter of supporting its state?
We can, I don't think it's, I think it's going to fall on deaf ears personally, I'm not saying that.
Probably, but I'm just wondering if.
In September, there will most likely be a motion put forward if Alberta municipalities for.
But, but both, both groups have really, are very negative towards this, but it's the cities and the large ones, and there was even a bit of a discussion, because, you know, we had the mayor from Lethbridge. And he's opposed to it, but he understands the philosophy of why some of us being proposed, because of the, of the large, you know, what's going on in large cities. And they get, some of them are getting very, very political, and so, anyway, it was quite a, quite a discussion of that, so, but it was. Again, not to say that we can't, you know, if you'd like to make a motion, we can definitely craft a letter and send it off, and, you know, both, but both Alberta Muni's and RMA are both opposed to that. And even, even they talked about the polling that they've done is not very favorable.
No.
It's, you know, so it's, it's sad.
I, personally, I would like to see if everybody is in favor to possibly draft a letter to be sent, both to the MLA and possibly to our.
Sure.
Directly.
Okay, so then what should we do?
I'd like to make.
I'd sure like to hear more, like, in the conference, I'd sure like to hear some discussion on that myself.
Oh, I think you will, I think, I don't think it's going away.
No.
And I think that, you know, Barb's concern, though, is legit, is both RMA and Alberta Muni's and the province have done studies on it, and it's not very favorable that a party politics is being proposed for local municipalities. And, you know, we look around the room, and we could have, you know, there's seven of us, we could have seven different theoretical party philosophies. But yet we come to the table representing, so they have to change the MGA, I mean, yeah, and they have to go through a whole different process to change it, because we're not supposed to be political when we come to the table, we're supposed to represent our constituents. And party politics isn't that way, so.
They have no problem with the letter, I just, I just, I'm sure like to hear the discussion.
I, I think you will, I think you will hear more of it, because I think it's the larger centers that are, we're seeing it come from, and unfortunately, they don't, they carry a lot of clout.
Yeah, too much.
There's been actually on the Alberta municipalities' website for several, several months, discussions about it, and kind of going back and forth. And I think that as councillors for the town of Vulcan, we have to think about people that live here, not about, you know, party politics. I don't think it has a place in municipalities, so.
I agree, I'm just trying to.
Well, I agree with Barb a hundred percent, and, you know, you're starting to notice, not starting, but there's a track record of ex-city mayors of Calgary running for premier. There's another one in Calgary, so it's, you know, it might not be as big of an issue as such a small community, but the cities, it definitely is, but I agree, everybody in here needs to represent the town first.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So I, I would agree with that, too.
But, I mean, we definitely can draft a letter, and so I think Barb's made a motion to draft a letter and send it off to, so do you want it sent to just our MLA and our, and the premier, or just do you want it? Okay, any further discussion on it?
Just a question, should that go to the Alberta municipalities as well, or?
Sure.
Probably would have to go to them and the RMA, too, so.
Yeah.
You know, because just to show the support that, you know, I mean, it really is a challenging one, I, you know, I just not quite sure why they're going down this route, but.
Oops.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, call a question in favor. Close, seeing none, it's carried, thank you, Barb. Okay, and moving on to Grant Hunter, so again, like I said, he, he was at the Mayor's Reeves, and he really got him, and Nathan McDorff both got over the ring, so that's why his report is so small, I think, it's maybe that he was a big one. Okay, so anything else on any of those four? Somebody wish to move that we, Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, call a question in favor. Closed, seeing none, it's carried, unanimously. Okay, moving on to bylaw number fifteen eighteen dash twenty-four, local improvement, Westfield Mills Lane Sanitary Line.
Everybody's had a chance to read through the report, biggest thing of note is the change in the local, from approved local improvement plan from March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, when we had anticipated costs of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the entire project. After all the bills were paid and the project was finished, we were actually down to a hundred and eighteen thousand. The interest rate didn't change from our cost estimates that we did, so we left that the same. So the cash costs for this project was seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars per lot, and if they are to pay annually, it'll be seven hundred and five ninety-six for the fifteen years that you're going to implement. And so we will bring in eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-five for the recovery every year for the local improvement for fifteen years until the money's paid back. Bylaw is very, very straightforward, you can do all three readings, because you've already approved the plan, so you can do all three readings if, if you're happy with the way that it's written. It's, it's very standard, local approval, the MGA says what it must contain, so that's why the MGA A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. You can look those up, and that's, that's the, all the things that need to be in the bylaw.
Okay.
I'd like to make the recommendation that council give bylaw number one five one eight dash two for first reading.
Okay, thank you, Miles First Reading. Any discussion on Miles' motion? Hearing none, call a question in favor. Close, seeing none, it's carried, second reading, Richard?
I'd like to make the recommendation that council give bylaw number one five one eight dash two for its second reading.
Okay, any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, call a question in favor. Opposed, none, so now we need to introduce the third, so Cole.
Make the motion to introduce the third reading of bylaw fifteen eighteen dash twenty-four.
Okay, any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question in favor. Anybody opposed, seeing none, it's carried, unanimously, now we can do the third.
I'll make the recommendation that council give bylaw number one five one eight dash twenty-four, third reading.
Thank you, any discussion on Barbara's motion? Thank you. Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Seeing none, call a question in favor. Closed, seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Thank you, Rich. So that process was painless. Okay, moving on to current business, the arena compressor rebuild and valve replacement program.
So one of the biggest, uh, you know, I touched on the reports, Stu's also discussed this with you during the planning session. And one of the big things from this, from our original discussion before the rebuild with the compressor was he's looking at the timing with having six more valves due for replacement at the end of the year. Uh, he'd like to do them all at once and we can get them with a little bit of extra funding, we can get them all on the same schedule. So essentially, we try to do the rebuild every five years or ten thousand hours. So this way he's hoping that we can get it lined up where every five years we're doing a rebuild of valves. It's one simple thing, especially when we're sharing the cost with the county at fifty-fifty. So this will be, well, all of our money in reserves, you know, we know it's coming when the time comes. And again, you guys as council know that this, this was coming. So that, uh, the reason why we're taking this from reserves as opposed to how we did it in the past where we put it in the, in the budget is because now we're entering long-term cost-sharing agreements with the county where this wasn't included. Because it was five years ago, was the last time we did it, and we had just a blank agreement back then. So the funding that we have, uh, put in the agreement for the last four years didn't include this upgrade, so. So that's why we had to do it from reserve.
I'll make the recommendation that council throws public work performance proposals for scheduled maintenance to the arena compressor system by Star Tech. Services at a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand three sixty-five-two cents to be drawn from the arena capital reserve and directs administration to notify the Vulcan curling club and Vulcan county of this project and request funding as per their respective agreements.
Okay, great. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, call a question in favor. Closed, it's carried unanimously. Great, thank you. Moving on, seven two, drought management.
So, as you're all aware, Minister Schultz has sent out lots of messaging on the drought, the possibility for twenty twenty-four. Uh, we've started the planning. Uh, we, council went through drought planning in, uh, two thousand and one. And so you've already created bylaws around that, including restrictions, those sort of things, water restrictions. One of the things now that's changed since we did the last planning as well, of course, we were part of the water commission. So we, uh, as CAOs met with the water commission to identify how we're working together to make sure that, uh, basically our messaging is the same throughout all the municipalities. We take down one, go into full restrictions and have another one, you know, let people, you know, wash their cars on the streets, kind of thing, those sort of things. So one of the things that was discussed is we were very successful as a group when we did the original, through the regional emergency management. Pushouts every week for COVID. So we thought we could do something very similar with that where we just push them out, uh, depending on the frequency, whether that be just like COVID where we do it daily, then bi-weekly, you know, as things slow down. And so that shifted our conversation to the, uh, to the next topic is, is what triggers that threshold? When, when do you just start with conservation? When do you put restrictions in place? When do you start shutting off those valves that you have agreements with? And I'll give you an example, the town of Vulcan, we have an agreement with Vulcan East Water Co-op. But it very clearly says in there that if we are in, uh, we can't supply them, they're one of the first ones to be shut off. So we have to look at that as a whole and how we can do that. So as a group, uh, we're hoping that we can put a conservation aside from our utility bylaws. We currently have a conservation bylaw through each community that is very, very similar, using very specific triggers and based on the Twin Valley reservoir. So say right now, we have three intakes. One is the old, original one, second one as well, you know, a third of the way down. Second, the third one is basically at the top of the reservoir and then your freeboard. Uh, we could have, and these are all just been thrown around as, as examples, but you could go into conservation when the first intake comes out of the water. And then when the second intake comes out of the water, that's when the full-on restriction, we look at shutting water off, those sort of things. So one of the big things that came through after that meeting is I sat down with Stu and we did some of our preliminary. We, again, we've both, uh, been through the process of what, and so from the town, we looked at major usage, what we can do. Uh, bigger things, our biggest usage internally with the town being our irrigation of our parks, those sort of things. So we looked at, you know, that. And then the last one, unrecoverable water would be the water park. Cause it can use up to thirty thousand gallons a day. And it just blows it in the air, goes down the drain and heads out to the ditch. So those are very obvious things that we can do from a conservation side, but they're not a drop in the bucket to our actual, our actual usage. So that started a bigger question, looking at our actual usage. Huge one came up was the golf course. The golf course uses, uh, per month more than the entire town of Vulcan, including the Vulcan East Water Co-op. So that put a pretty big, uh, indicator that they were the first ones that should be talked to for, because they don't buy water from the water commission. The water commission sells us the raw water and we sell it to the golf course. So, uh, being that we're responsible for their usage, should have a conversation. So that Stu and I kind of, wow, that's more of a town council to executive conversation that needs to happen. So we said, you know, what are we going to ask councillor, uh, recommend to council to kind of make this? What do you want from them? So basically a conservation plan, what can they do to conserve water and what? And then work with them on where do the restrictions, you know, we have this from the water commission? At what point is there not going to be, you know, too much discussion that we're out of water? When is it okay to shut it off? And then, and clearly put those in a, in a document that will, uh, supersede or, or keep going from this point forward. And it's pretty easy to talk about doing, I think it's based on their usage. You know, the town of Vulcan and we, we put the cubic meters in there so that you can see that. And it, it's quite eye-opening, you know, uh, the golf course uses between a hundred and thirty to a hundred and ninety-five thousand cubic meters, uh, per year in their irrigation window. And the town as a whole, including the, uh, Vulcan East Co-op uses two hundred and eighty-five thousand cubes. So I don't think everybody's aware of how much usage that is. So even having the conversation, making them aware, having them come back with a plan and then putting a timeline on the plan. Because it, it's easy to say we need the plan right now when we're not sure where, where the drought, you know, could be. We could get six inches of rain and it may not be an issue. But long-term, looking at these numbers, Stu and I decided that we should make the recommendation to council that this is, this is important regardless. From a conservation standpoint, you know, in two thousand and one, we put in full-time, you know, our bylaw measures to conserve water, but we never addressed the golf courses at that time. So hopefully this is a perfect timing to start that conversation.
So does that two eighty-five, does that include the golf course?
No.
No. I didn't think so. Okay. Like, it was quite a discussion, both that, that meeting and the one next about this. You know, it's, I think it's starting with a letter. You know, we have to find a way, I mean, if they can find a way, I mean, you go by there sometimes, the sprinklers are on, the wind's blowing fifty kilometers an hour. It's going across the road, it's not hitting the grass. Things like that have to be looked at. I don't think they use the pond anymore, right? Does the, the water park, it went to the, the pond, didn't it?
It does.
Okay. And there is a pipe there, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So I, I think these are things we have to look at, you know, they should look at, I guess. So I think, I mean, basically if we go, because the one pipe that Stu said is already, the top one is already out of the water. So right now we're that far down. And when we talked at this meeting, we said the first stage should be just above that. When the water's getting close to it, that should set some, trigger the first, you know, first stage. And so we're always below that. And, you know, depending on how bad it gets this year, hopefully God willing, it rains and lots. But I think we, I think the first step here is to, to get the letter going and emphasize the fact that we are in a serious, serious situation and not downplay it, but really state the obvious. And I'm sure everybody there knows, you know, but.
I'm not sure about that. I had a conversation privately with the board member of the golf course a couple of months ago. It started kind of coming up on our radar. And it didn't seem to be an issue of concern to them yet. So I agree, we need to give them a heads up saying, hey, what are your ideas? And kind of an approach to work with them, not against them.
Yeah, because we pay, you said twenty-eight cents?
Twenty-eight cents.
And then we charge them twenty-eight cents.
Yeah.
So.
I, I like the idea of sending out a letter because I'm sure the Vulcan Golf Course is not the only one that's going to be facing drought situations this year. And if they can work with other golf courses, see what they're planning, I think they've got a better idea than at least, than I do, for sure.
And that was our conversation is they're the ones, we're just selling the water. They're the ones that use it and they're the ones that manage it. Our, if we don't have a plan in place, our only option is to turn off the water.
Yeah.
That's not going to be.
No.
You know, again, it's a, it's a, it's a huge recreational asset in our community, it's a benefit to the community. So engaging them and giving them six weeks to, to submit a plan gives, it's that start. Like it might not be a final plan in six weeks. It's okay, we're going to be able to do this. And it, and because we don't, Stu and I had that conversation, we don't, we are big parks, not golf courses. So we don't know how much water, you know, they feel that the roughs need as opposed to the greens or the fairways or they have different areas throughout that. That's what they pay a groundskeeper for. So that, they're always going to want an unlimited amount of water. But putting it back in their hands to say, okay, when, rather than you cutting us off, here's the things that we will do to conserve is very proactive. Gives them an opportunity to, for them to tell us how they will conserve water as opposed to, uh, us just implementing restrictions that could have a very negative impact on a youth recreation facility within our community. Yeah, I'm quite confident it's going to rain a whole lot this spring and we'll have the issue, but I'm honestly prepared.
That's the Florida real estate. Your Lord and real estate department will be wearing boots for weeks.
Well, it's starting off better, looking better than it did. But still, I, I think that even down the road, you know, by implementing a, um, this plan with them, you know, I think that, and again, exactly what it says in the request is to allow them to come back to us, say, this is what we believe we can do and how we can mitigate some of our potential issues and so.
And we'll use very plain language. A lot of people don't know what, you know, cubic meters are and the volume of water that is. It, plain and simple, the town of Vulcan uses seventy-nine million gallons and that a lot, a lot of times shocks people. Well, now we are able to say that the golf course uses forty of that. That all of a sudden makes sense to people. So we'll use plain language in there, using, you know, gallons, amp, cubic meters to, to show. Because it, it is a concern. That's a, that's a huge amount of water.
Yeah.
Well, and this could be a concern going on for, you know, on, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's not maybe necessarily a one-off.
That's right.
So. That's why having a long-term plan like you mean, and this is just the starting point.
Okay, cool.
Well, I'd like to make the recommendation that council direct administration to draft a letter, the Vulcan Golf and Country Club Executive, including information about the current water shortage planning and historical water usage data and request a written water conservation plan to be submitted to the town no later than May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, great, thank you. Any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing none, call a question? Closed, seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the Vulcan Legion request. So this one came to us last time.
So Chris has had a chance to work with them, uh, sent the second letter and really was, wasn't a clear understanding, I guess, of what was being requested, like a blanket open doesn't fit within our policy. And so because the last one was done over email and I think they're kind of struggling to, well, what does the town want to know? Chris asked me how we wanted to move forward because he didn't think he had enough to bring it back to council. And I said, let's present it back to council, send it back to the, with the policy, because the policy is very, very simple. Our, our policy very clearly says, if you're requesting money in a grant form, which they are, that it has a specified amount of the grant request, detailed usage of the grant funds, what it's for, and a detailed explanation of benefits to the, to the residents. So we'll give them that and give them, you know, because it's great that they have done the fundraising and they, they're going to make the money for the re. And, and I'm sure council recognizes that they have other projects to do, like the patio and all of those things. Need to know what the money's for. So this is, I, I hate going back and forth like this a whole bunch of times because they, you know, I don't want to discourage them as well. I don't want them to go, well, it's just bureaucracy, they're just going to get us write letters. Because we're not, we're truly trying to get, write one thing down, that amount, and we'll take it to council. Because, you know, you guys have, uh, have always supported the Legion, uh, when you can. So, so that's why I drafted motion the way it was, is to send it back again with a copy of our policy. I shouldn't joke about it or deny it because there's nothing there to. But I shouldn't joke.
Well, and I think, I think we've got to be very, very careful too, because I think we're potentially opening the door for other groups to, to do something very similar and to, to try and pick and choose. And I think that's partly why the policy was trying to draft it that way is so that, you know, we don't have groups sitting on funds and not feel that they need to use them because they potentially look at a rainy day. But we're all, I've seen that we need that rainy day, so. That's strictly my opinion, but.
I agree with you. We deal with this in, in Lyons all the time and there's always kind of, everybody fishing for money, you know, we just.
I, I, that was my thought originally too.
Again, I think that's partly why. And again, you know, I believe the policy is pretty straight explanatory, um, so. What's your folks?
I'd like to make the recommendation that council directs administration to respond to Vulcan. Legion and provide a copy of policy F dot zero five, one-time grants to organizations to assist in clarifying the specific information required for council to fully consider this grant.
Thank you. Any further discussions? Hearing none, call a question in favor. Closed, seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, the committee, the whole meeting.
So this report together is based on, uh, budget, our final budget coming, uh, coming up. We've been through the planning session, uh, as you know, majority of the budget changes we're making are things that are out of our control. We now have the numbers for the province, for education, the assessment to the end. So really what we need to do at that meeting will be going over, uh, the budget. Any contributions to reserves from our financial statements when they're finished. I went back and forth on dates. Historically, we tried to do it the last week of April, so we tried to pass the budget during our first meeting in May because that allows us to get the notices out of all of those things. Uh, councillor Moore Coffey has identified that she's for about a four-week window in there as a three-day. So, uh, I picked one, uh, being April thirtieth, being a Tuesday. And the reason why is that allows us that the Monday to get everything together. Tuesday afternoon, we should be able to, uh, to do this in, uh, in less than four hours. So, uh, hoping that we can do it here while Amanda's available. The only thing is councillor Moore Coffey is not available that day. But I also, uh, she is available the day before. And because we're, uh, not making significant changes to the structure of the budget, just the, uh, the, the things that are out of our control. I've also, uh, said that on Monday, when I get the final copy, I'll sit down with, with Barbara and we go through. We go through it and then break anything forward to that meeting if everything else is available. We just don't want to wait too late. We don't want Cole in the field. We don't want all of the rest of you getting busy at meetings as well.
I do have a meeting that evening.
Okay.
So we usually have supper with residents, but I can skip that, but our meeting starts.
We should be done by four.
By four? That's three oh, you said four and a half.
Well. Yeah, if we start at one, we should, we should be done before the end of the day.
That'll work.
And I'm not sure, um, quite often you, um, Will has issues too, because he works on Mondays too. So I think that's another reason why Tuesday is.
I think that was, the thirtieth was the date, cause I did ask when we were all together and that's when you said you'd check in. So I went, made the phone call to you, said, I'll try the end of the month. And so we did, and you had one day available and missed the Friday. So that, that's kind of why I would put the thirtieth. And that allows us, if you go through the budget and there's some structural changes, because that is where we're going to show you, you know, with all of this, you know, with the new assessment, uh, it will be showing you the, uh, changes in the mill rate that will balance the budget. It's basically what we're going to be looking at. Uh, we'll be, and again, I'll turn through the budget for you, but the province isn't, the assessment went up, the province isn't changing definitions, no matter what happens. Uh, taxes are going to go up on the education side because they're going to keep that entire. So we've already got those numbers, it's already gone up above fifty thousand. So from your guys' standpoint, to, uh, hold the mill rate or lower the mill rate, it's hopefully going to be, you're not going to be able to lower those taxes, but you're going to be able to hold it fairly close.
Okay, so.
Don't want to ruin the surprise story, but anyway, this is about the committee in the whole. If that works, I, I do apologize that I couldn't make any of those days work.
Okay, so we wish to, Cole?
I'd like the recommendation that council approve the committee of the whole meeting to be scheduled at one P M. on April thirtieth, two thousand twenty four, for the purpose of reviewing the draft two thousand twenty three offerings.
Okay, thank you, Cole. Any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing them, a call of questions in favor? Closed, seeing none, security now, we say. Moving on to the Spock Days request.
So this one is almost identical to last year's. Well, and those of you that have been around for a while know that, uh, that we give them a request for services, they sit down in a meeting, they put everything together. And of course, Spock Days is one of those things that morphs year after year. Sometimes the events change today for locations, those sort of things. So we basically try to move things around to accommodate. This is for everything that is, uh, to date. I will give you a heads up that there is another request, uh, possibly coming from, uh, the, uh, sort of group for, uh, street closure, possibly to do, uh, barbecue again. But they don't have everything finalized because there was some things that came up with one of the streets that they proposed blocking for the day had a restaurant on it. So it may not be beneficial to the restaurant owner if I was trying to clarify. If the restaurant's in favor of it, then we'll bring it back to council. But it wasn't ready to be brought forward, but the committee wanted to move forward with the rest of, to make sure that they had picnic tables, barricades, all of that spoken for before anybody else brought anything forward. So this is again, a lot of information, but we did motion so that it's one big motion, but it covers all of the very specific things. Uh, they changed the, uh, name of the nine, or the Taste of Vulcan to just, uh, the Nine O One Food Truck Event, uh, those sort of things. So we've updated it for that. Parade Road is exactly the same. Again, participation council, uh, with the float and many counselors that can participate and that use of the barricades for parade road, picnic tables, panels, barricades for the different events that are around town and, uh, waving any rental fees on any of the arena pavilion, uh, ball diamonds, those sort of things. And to expand camping.
Judy, I'll make the recommendation that council approves the Vulcan's Spock Days Committee Request for Temporary Street Closure from nine A M. to three P M. on Saturday, June eighth, two thousand twenty four, as follows. Food truck event, First Avenue North, between the alley behind the county to First Street North. The parade route as presented, including intersections along the parade route from ten A M. to eleven A M. And that council approves the participation of the Starship float to many members of council who wish to take part in the Spock Days Parade. And that council approves the Vulcan's Spock Days Committee Request for Services as Falls, Use of Barricades for the Parade Route, Picnic Tables, Panels and Barricades at Opposed Community Events Within Town, The Use of the Lewis Ware Pavilion, Vulcan Arena, Virginia Mitchell Park Area and Ball Diamonds, Virginia Mitchell Park Campground to be opened for expanded camping for baseball players and directs the community service managers and public works foremen to coordinate with the Vulcan's Spock Days Committee for these requests.
That's a mouthful.
That was very well done. And I was hoping to hit all those points so that you could just say, I made that motion.
Did you even breathe in here?
Well done, Judy.
I needed to breathe.
Okay, any discussion on?
Any motions?
Next year, you could say, I would like to make that motion. As presented.
Okay, hearing none, a call of questions in favor? Closed, seeing none, security now, we say. Great, thank you. Moving on to the committee reports. There's one there from the Waste Commission from January thirty first. Okay, moving on to Marcus Foundation Minutes from February the twenty seventh. Okay, moving on to Mayor's Reviews. Library Board. Okay, Victims Services Society Minutes. Okay, any questions on any of those five? If not, so you wish to leave them? Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, call of questions in favor? Closed, seeing none, security now, we say. Okay, moving on to verbals, Councilor Magnusson.
I haven't had any meetings since the, uh, since our last council meeting. I just had a, uh, an encounter with some repairs, uh, expressing some displeasure regarding snow removal, which I found quite disappointing because I'm, uh, happy to do a really good job. And I suggested that perhaps, uh, next election, they could run for council and put in their two cents, because I'm sure they're very well- knowledged, more knowledge than the people that have been working around with the town for over twenty years, trying all different sorts of strategies. But, you know, it's certainly welcome to, uh, put the name forward. That's all I have?
Questions for that? Thank you. Councilor.
I had, um, Kim was talking earlier about a drought meeting in the morning. And then, um, what we talked about, well, obviously the drug user and all that. In the afternoon, um, at the Water Commission, we had our auditor come in and, uh, we approved the audit statements and then we went back into the drought discussion. Very interesting discussion, a lot of concern over what we're going to do. And, uh, the community or the municipalities as a whole, um, working together to try to limit water use. That was, that came out of there very both in the morning and in the afternoon. Um, I was actually very impressed with both meetings. I thought, especially in the morning with everybody, the C A was there. It was very well done. It was well-spoken by everybody and I thought, uh, it came out with a pretty good consensus of the steps going forward and circle stages of emergency and that. So, um, all in all, that was about it. It was, of course, Water Commission, the word drought, you know, the conversations going. So that was a lot of conversation in that. It was very good conversation in both meetings. So that was about it.
Okay, any questions, Richard?
No, thank you, Councilor Magnusson. On March twenty fifth, I had a victim services meeting, which, um, is in the minutes there. Um, I just wanted to give an update that we finally got, um, word that Elizabeth McCullough has received her R C M P criminal clearance. So she will officially be a co-program manager with Victim Services, our Victim Services, starting the first. Um, she's training at this time, as time allows. She's given notice at her current job. She's an amazing addition. If you haven't met her, that woman is, I was quite impressed with her. They, we're still waiting for interview dates for, but it's nice that, um, Lizzie's got her clearance because that'll work well when she goes in for interviews. So keep our fingers crossed for that, but I don't think there should be a problem with them getting on, so. Uh, March twenty sixth, had a Marcus Foundation meeting. It was a relatively short meeting after our supper. Uh, we had, uh, three policies, uh, we updated and approved and went over the resident survey results. And there's still no word, so I don't know what eminent means, but there's no word on our H P P grant. It's very frustrating. Uh, we need to complete a short form for our business plan for two thousand twenty five. So Lori and Kelly and myself will get together in the next couple of months and get that sent off to the government. Uh, March twenty eighth, I had, uh, F C S S and Food Bank meeting. We have three members at large that will be leading our board, uh, two of long, long time members. And one, um, it interferes with her, her work, especially if we have to change a date because she has students that she, she works with. So we'll be, um, we're going to get one member at large for sure from Champion. And so that leaves two more. We're going to put in an advertisement out, so we will have that in, um, their end of date. I think it's June thirtieth, so we'll have it to council to approve these three new people in, beginning with June. Um, we had some harsh news on our R D N funding. Um, our past funding has been for five years and we got to a hundred thousand a year and that pays for one and a half, um, employees. And, um, there's the other, as the rest of it goes for expenses such as gas cards, pay utility bills, pay rent if they're going to get booted. And it's, it's a preventative measure and then we do financial counseling so that hopefully it doesn't happen again. But the need has been so great, I got a frog, so excuse me. Um, the halftime position was in the youth center. They just had announced they were opening the youth center up on, on Mondays. They're finding there's a lot of kids out there that don't have access to lunch. And so they want it open so that kids can, can come there and eat. And also in the evening, it's a safe place for them to get some off the street. And there's, um, other kids there, whether they're in need of social assistance or not, and they all get along and, and they're fed. So, um, we were advised on March twenty seven that our hundred thousand dollars a year has been dropped to twenty thousand. For two-year term.
That's a hit.
That's a hit. Um, and the term ended March thirty first. We got four weeks notice. So Dawn called up to them and, uh, they know how busy we are down there. So they're paying for April. They have funds to cover us for April to give us a chance to rework our budget somehow. So I don't know who's going to lose out there, but, um, we've got Claire leaving the end of June. So might be, you know, routing paid, um, you're to pay Paul and things like that. So, um, because the new amount doesn't even cover our expenses. And, uh, they, uh, we've got, Dawn's got a really good relationship with people that she talks to, the work that works with this R D N, or has to just, they, they're told what they can do. But, um, they're, they figure that some of these F C S S's that are getting it will not have all the programs to be able to put the money into. So they're figuring some of this money's going to come back into their pot in Vulcan Isolated to get some of that money, but it's going to be tough. They don't understand rural, rural settings. They, and F C S is in the cities. It comes to them and they just don't it out to all the different organizations. They don't use it to fund programs or anything like that. So, so that was, um, a little discur, disconcerting. And the reason it happened that there were so many requests, the R D N did a presentation at the F C S S convention. And, um, so a lot of F C S S was, were not aware of this grant. So there were seventy five more applications than normal. So that's why they're thinking that maybe some of this money could might come back. Um, a small dedicated cohort of volunteers have remained crucial to the smooth running of the food bank. We continue to receive, uh, beef donations once a month from Cargill. We receive, uh, bread from Cog's Bread once a month. And we also, um, have weekly rescue food from Ocatoks. And so volunteer drivers pick up all the food for us and they have to be there early in the morning a lot of times, like seven thirty in the morning up in Ocatoks to get this. And so thank God for these volunteers that, that go up and do that. We do pay for their mileage. Um, We Country Special Needs Bottle Depot allows us to use their haul trailer to, uh, move the rescue food because it takes a big trailer to carry all the food down here. Um, and the Ocatoks Lions Club come and help load the food into that trailer. And then the trailer comes down and there's Vulcan volunteers that move it into the food bank where it's all weighed and, and organized. So it does take a village of volunteers and they are so appreciated. So thank you to all our volunteers out there. Hamper's needs keep rising, of course. Um, in February, uh, we had forty hampers go out and fed a hundred and twelve people. Every community in the county of Vulcan was affected with food hampers this, in the month of February, except for Mossy and Ensign. And I have an M P C meeting tomorrow and a regional, uh, F C S S meeting in Calgary on April fifteenth, from twelve to four. So hopefully, maybe we can find out some more about the R D N funding there. So that's my report.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Judy? If not, moving on to Councilor Magnusson.
Um, I have had no meetings. I have meetings that are coming up, um, a lot. Um, and there is actually, uh, just community-wise, there is a community, uh, volunteer recruitment on Thursday evening at the Lodge Hall, um, that's being hosted, uh, for the community. And, um, let's see, the volunteer dinner is the following Wednesday evening on the seventeenth of April at the C R C. I believe it's at five o'clock. I can't go to that either.
It's on the seventeenth.
Yes, the seventeenth, yeah. And, um, there's supposed to be a newcomer, um, day this Saturday also at the Lodge Hall. I'm not sure if it's going to run or not now, because we don't have a lot of sign-ups, but hoping. Yeah, so there's lots of community things going on. And if you want to volunteer.
Any questions, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, so I just heard about this from somebody that told me there was this volunteer thing at the, at the Peter Dawson Lodge. So where is it being advertised, I don't see it?
It's actually at the Lodge Hall.
At the Lodge Hall, okay.
Yeah, Lodge Hall. And, um, it's on Facebook and Connect First is sponsoring it. And, um, they've been putting up posters all over.
Is it like in Vulcan?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll check, I must have missed that one.
Yeah.
No, it's good, it's good to hear.
Yeah, I think, I believe it starts at five on Thursday. My staff will be there.
We can repost it.
Yeah.
I'd agree with you.
Okay, anything else for Bernard? If not, thank you, Councilor Dunham.
Um, I had one meeting last Thursday, the Water Commission, I was unable to attend because of a scheduling conflict, um, but Richard was there, so it sounds like you guys had a good.
Yeah, it was a lot of meetings, yeah.
Um, other than that, I haven't had any meetings. Um, I guess, uh, a lot of feedback I've gotten from our team dance at the town now.
How did that go?
Pretty good. I heard there was about a hundred and thirty kids there. Yeah, so that's, my kids really loved it.
My two grandsons here, do you have fun? Yeah.
Yeah. It's kind of nice, since I guess the schools aren't doing things like that anymore. It's nice to have still.
Nope.
And then we got kids from other. We got kids from other communities coming over now too as well.
Well, I heard that there was a bunch of kids from Clarson or High River places that got coming in, yeah.
That's awesome. That's great. Super. Okay, any questions for Cole?
Since I don't have young kids, how did the hockey team do?
We won silver.
That's awesome.
That's awesome. Better because I thought we could have won gold, but we kind of powered over it. The kids did really good.
You got sponsorship for the blessing stuff?
We did, yeah. We, a few businesses sponsored and we had a bottle drive that was incredibly successful. I would bet we raised close to $8,000. So we might be looking for something to donate to. We haven't really gotten together yet to discuss that. I think, well, I'm in the minority potentially, but I think some of the parents would like to divvy it up and pay for the hotel costs. But I'm hoping that maybe we can get some of that to go to something.
Okay, anything else for Cole? Thank you. Moving on to me. There was a joint use meeting for the AAR committee and attraction retention. And then, no, I love.
You can't change it. I wrote it that way.
Anyway, and because of it, there is a, there is a young lady from Champion who's going in to become a doctor. And so she is doing a, she's visiting with her classmates and they, most of them don't know much about rural. So she's putting on a date in May, May eleventh where they're bringing out. She's got fifty-eight kids, I believe it is, or youth coming right at the moment, and she's got twelve on the waiting list. And they're going to come out and they're going to put on a skills day at the hospital. And in this skills days, they've got doctors and nurses and the labs, similar to what we did for the youth at the school. This young Groves girl is doing it all herself type thing. She's got sponsorship through the university to cover the cost of the bus and some of this stuff. And so, you know, we did go to see if we could get some funding for a couple of other areas for her. But the one request that came, and I haven't talked to Kim about it, but trying to come up with eighty pins. I did get eighty pins from the county, I don't know if they'll own them. And so it's kind of fallen altogether. This young Groves girl is just, she is so cool about it and she's just really pushing it. So I think it's great. They've got Lana Fair coming from Arrowood to talk about, you know, again, rural living and you, you know, and really push these kids that are youth, I should call them, not kids, that are going in for doctors that rural is a potential place to be. And so anyway, it is, she's pretty well got it all handled, but it's on the May eleventh. And so if for some reason you see a bunch of, they're going to go to the Groves Ranch out there or colony. Quite unmoved out there for these kids. They have quite a lot of different ideas of what they could do to show the youth what rural living is like. And so it sounds, it sounds like, like I said, it's all together. I mean, they did try to go through our PAP, but our PAP is two years behind in their programs because, you know, they're planning two years in advance. And we just had the skills things for the school kids with our PAP. And, but anyway, it was just to listen to this young girl, you know, she, oh yeah, I've got that handled and got that handled. And, you know, I go, gosh, it's, it was just, just enlightening to see how a young lady like that could still be going to university and going in for a doctor and have her things together on it. But it was just great to see. So again, it's May eleventh, so if you can write that on your calendar and if you're around and see all these youth, you know, that's what it's all about. Had our solid waste meeting and it's coming along pretty good. Our budget, our audit financial statement will be out next, for the next month. So we had to move it because of conflicting days. There's a couple of our board members that have issues with, you know, trying to make two meetings in a day. And so we're trying to move our board meeting around, our solid waste meeting around. Mayors and Reeves, I went to, or I didn't go to, I was on Zoom. There was fifteen in person and sixteen online. Martin Shields talked about the trucking regulations. It's really affecting the farming industry. So he's got a private members bill because of the, they go from province to province. And, you know, so he's got a private's member bill to try and see if they can change the rules on trucking. Because as an example of feedlot, they get charged against the trucker's time while they're loading the cattle. So, you know, he could be in a feedlot for an hour waiting for his cattle to be loaded and that hour goes against his trucking time. So, you know, it has nothing to do with reality of how it works. And then he also talked in length and on invasive species. And you guys are really going to hear more and more and more about this on too. Like Waterton right now is completely locked down. You cannot bring a goat in. And it's going to go even down to paddle boats. It's going to come into inflatables. It's going to come to a lot of things. So he's trying to, you know, get a handle on it. And Grant Hunter is really involved in this invasive species. They're trying to go after a couple invasive species to start off with and then, you know, broaden it out. Because if it gets into our irrigation systems, it's going to be astronomical. Especially since a lot of the irrigations are going to bury the lines. And because these mussels will get inside the lines and then they just multiply terribly. Anyway, so that was the major thing that Grant, our Martin had talked about. And then again, Nathan talked about it, I mean, Grant Hunter talked about it too. And then then we got into the, Nathan Newdorff talked a little bit about the power problems, you know, because we have a brownout the other day or just about a brownout. And so they're, they're working on that to try and get that, a handle on the, you know, power problem issue. And then, then we went into the party platform thing and that went on for probably an hour. You know, Nathan and Grant both are not in favor of this at all. And he says that he doesn't think there's one rule in LA. But he says unfortunately, the way the party, the province has been divided up now, the two large municipalities are going to have, you know, all the power. So, but it was a huge discussion. So I think you're right, Richard. I think that you're going to see at the convention in the fall and the RM, RM eight convention they just had and coming up, there'll be more and more push to have more pros and cons, advantages, disadvantages and why. But they also talked about the parties might not even be the same as, like you might say, I'm a liberal party, but it'd be something like the NDP, it might not have anything to do with the other parties, NDP, you know, or vice versa, or the Liberals. So they might have names that are similar, but they have nothing to do with, or, you know, we get a Vulcan party together and that's what we, you know, are flying on. So it was huge discussion on it. They had a presentation by the United Irrigation District. And the major discussion they had was talking about these new, two new dams that they're proposing. One is on the, by Bow City, which is like upstream from Bow City. And then there's another one that's potentially is going to affect somewhere out in the, in the Waterton area. There's another proposed dam out there. But the, the one on the, on the Bow City Dam one is the one that they're really pushing on. And especially with the drought situations, talking more about, the only problem with that one for sure, it's an on-stream dam. And, you know, then you get the federal government involved in. Yeah, fisheries. And, I mean, the one that, the Twin Valley Dam was twenty-seven years of, you know, going back and forth. RM eight, Jason spoke about the insurance, anticipating insurances to skyrocket a little bit, depending on what's going on in the world. Talked about website update and then with the AM, she talked a little bit more about the fiscal framework, school tax, exactly what you were saying earlier, that government is not, is increasing it, but not accepting.
They're not increasing the mill rate, but they're all, they're closing all the rates, the assessments, because overall the province assessment's not up significantly.
So that's what the city of Calgary did, you know, in previous years with the school tax. And they said, well, it was good enough for the cities to do it. It was good enough for us as a province. EMS was another bit of a discussion and police, you know, which went back to both Nathan and to Grant about, you know, the police policy is Bill eleven. What they're trying to do is with Bill eleven is bring in, with the sheriff system is get them to the same level as a police officer. So he said, you know, it's not going to change much, other than it looks like we're, you know, driving this down your throat. According to Grant, he says, really all we're trying to do is to do something so that if the federal government pulled up contract, we do have something which to me makes sense to, you know. And then she talked a little tiny bit about insurance too again. And then the mayors and rives went into this terms of reference. And I tell you, if you want to see a bunch of kids fighting over it, it's worse than a, you know, it's standing back all the same blocks, policies that are going on on this term of reference is for, you know, like, if a municipality sends a representative there, who cares, whether the mayor or the, you know, your janitor, you know, really, the municipality sent that as a representative. But I tell you, no, it's either got to be a mayor or deputy mayor or Reeve or deputy Reeve. It was just Kim Bone that was just fighting it off.
Paul was going to have a short meeting, so I called at three o'clock.
It was still going on at quarter to four, the discussion on this. So anyway, I sat there and listened to it.
You had an agenda too.
But anyway, so then today I went to VAPA. That's Will's, but he wasn't able to go, so I was there. The, which is the Vulcan Area Patrol, Public and Petroleum Association. So again, the first half of the meeting was a discussion of whether we should exist anymore. Because there's fifty-six oil companies in the county of Vulcan, but there's only one oil company that ever seems to come to these meetings. Those two guys from the oil company, and again, I apologize, I didn't break down where they're from, but this one's Patrick. And I think it's from CNI, CS.
C N I, really?
Yeah, I think. But anyway, they're very, he just said that he really believes we should stay in existence. Then there was a bit of a discussion that maybe we should be really brought in our, and going from Vulcan Area Petroleum Public, Vulcan Area Public and Petroleum Association to maybe energy and branch out and try and get the solar and wind people involved in this association so that they can start handling some of the issues that, that are being created from solar and wind, you know, dust, you know, the issues and questions and, and, you know, garbage issues and stuff like, you know, weeds and, you know, those are the areas that the oil gas had issues with. And they've kind of gone corrected by getting them to the table so that they understood. And so again, it was really quite well received on that. They said that they have no new wells planned for this area. Most of the companies are not, they're doing, you know, assets retirement. So if a well's been shut in for five or six years and it stays, they're going to go ahead and clean it up. And so it's not good news on one hand, but. And then this Kirsten Lucas, she's our administrator right now, part-time administrator. She's, she's stepping down, so we're going to be looking for a new person for that. The county and, and the VAPA used to get together and do a breakfast on the Friday morning for SWAT days. County has decided, the ag department of the county decided that they're going to try something different this year. And they're going to partner with the four-H club or four-H people and put on an event at the ag facility. Across the highway on the night of the day that they do their cattle sale or cattle sale and put on an event. So VAPA is going to participate financially with that group and try and do it all. They figured they were going to put on a meal for three hundred and fifty people out there and try and do that for us for the May twenty-seventh. So that was pretty well VAPA and the airs. So that ends my.
Just a comment on, I guess, a class one legislation that Mr. Shields was talking about. I think I read an article, the Alberta government's got legislation coming forward to give farmers an exemption so they can challenge the test.
Yeah.
Similarly, I think it's a really good idea because unfortunately Humble was the trigger to that.
Right.
And I don't want to, you know, that was an awful thing, right? But it led to, I'm going to call it over activism towards that. Where they went from, we need to tweak some things to, let's make this so difficult and expensive that it's going to ruin a lot of industries. And it has. It's hurt our community. Because I can't hire anybody anymore because they either don't have a class one or if they do have a class one, I can't afford them. Like, I bet you there has cut, I don't have any statistics on this at all. This is just from what I'm hearing is people trying to get a class one, I bet it's been cut in half because of it.
Seventeen to twenty grand is an average cost to get a class one license, though.
To me, the biggest thing is it's the time consuming and you have to take them in a city. So if, I know a few younger guys getting their class one, they have to drive to Calgary and back every day for a month or even a month and a half. So how do you do that if you already have a job? So it's, they need to adjust that back somewhat.
You know, the twenties, sorry.
Yeah, no.
Our society as a whole in North America, both sides of the border, we're short thirty percent truck drivers. We need way more long haulers. Can you get, like you say?
Do you think that that is what Martin Shields wants to discuss?
No, this was a little different. But again, I think what Cole's saying though is quite true is that, you know, they're trying to change the legislation, you know, because like you said, they tighten it up so tight that, you know.
Yeah. I recently, from a CPO notice standpoint, there has been some changes on the, specifically for farm on class one.
Yeah.
Drivers and family members, but it still doesn't help you without a map.
No, that's true.
But, but yeah, there has been some exemptions for truck to market for farms and being able to employ family members. But there's no exceptions.
Yeah, for sure.
So there, there are changes, hopefully.
Well, I think it's a sign that they've acknowledged that maybe this has gone too far.
It was too much.
Okay, anything else? If not, somebody wish to be moved, moved there. Okay, Barbara? Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Here we're done. A call question, one of your favorite, posed, let's carry it down, Steve. Okay, moving on to activity management list.
Wasn't too much on there and everything was accomplished from the last meeting, so.
Okay, any questions for Kim on that one? Not CPU, CEO?
So pretty straightforward. Nothing really stands out. We did the oath of office for Channing, so it's kind of funny that we did his oath. And five minutes later, he ran out the front door with his orange jacket on and dealt with some chickens. He, he took a fair amount of internal teasing about that. Yes, no, it was honestly, he got his, he got his signature on the oath of office and was out the door within five minutes. And of all things, chickens. So.
So, uh, the Water Commission meeting was probably the most interesting because it, again, Stu and I went through a ton of numbers, historical data. And just basically coming up, like, we've always had strategies for that. So, and it was really nice having, there was very good conversations from the village standpoint where there hasn't been a lot of conversations about. But I think Jamie Smith probably said it best. Says you can tell who waters your lawn and shaming works pretty well as well. The comment, the cost of water alone, people aren't blowing it in the air anymore or trying to keep, you know, trees, trees and grass growing. So it's, you know, with the public noticing that it's gonna go out and share the messaging, it should hopefully deter anybody from using it to the point where you'd actually have to physically do restrictions like turn the pot off, those sort of things. So, so that was really good. I think it was a really good conversation. I'm glad that it carried on later. We've been working with Pristine Homes on zoning options. He jumping all over trying to figure out the Willows, that area that we got the sewer line finished now and how to move that forward. Again, as, as Henry does, he comes in with tons of ideas, lots of energy, those sort of things. And I pulled the brakes on him a little bit and said, development agreement, first thing we need is a development agreement. Oh, okay. So we went from rezoning all the land back to talking about development agreements. So hopefully, you know, puts more attention to that. Hopefully, we'll be able to have something to bring back to council soon. Budget updates that are ongoing. Everybody's getting our final, everybody's getting our final budget numbers now. And so everything's coming together. And, yeah. Really straightforward. This week, I will have the peace officer program review. Basically just letting them know that we're, we're putting the program on hold for now. But they will go through our old, some of our older stuff. And Gabby was good enough to say that she's on shift and she'll go over and answer a bunch of questions for anything that's on the file side. I did the regional emergency management agency meeting, that's our annual one that was supposed to be held, is the communications meeting. We did that at the county office, it went very well. No, no, big budgets stayed very close to the statement. And we just updated some of the escape and, on escape, the evacuation plans. All of the, all of the urban areas within the county, so. And actually brought a few more, you know, brought to our attention that SCBA has as many kids out there in the summer as, and that's something that wasn't on our list before. So, and go horse, hopefully we'll relocate them out of there, so hopefully get sure we have a plan for that. And, and also Aspen Crossing with the other campers that they have now is also a concern. Because, you know, it's trying to manage that many people, it's something that we need in our plan. So, yeah, did that. Unless there's questions on anything else in there, we've got the contracts for the sports courts. We have a meeting scheduled for this week to, for startups.
Okay, any questions for Kim on any of this? Okay, if not, move on to development officers. Pretty straightforward.
Izzy.
Yeah, should have a, we have a PC meeting tomorrow, I believe. It's quite a bit on the agenda.
Okay, uh, nothing there. Move on to public works.
I'm gonna point out, Stu mentioned that he moved furniture again before us, so we may not ask him to be moved stuff for a little while.
I, I checked the main office for the new furniture. It looks the same up there.
We thought, well, we had file cabinets and things we moved in the back.
I liked that again.
Yeah. There you go, ten or fifteen years, we don't change anything. And then change things twice a year. It gets noticed.
All righty, move on to community services managers.
The position will be filled on the fifteenth.
Yeah, I see that.
Will be good. Channing's quite a bit on his plate right now. So having an extra hand in there is gonna help out a lot.
His comments about the float and the parade said, given the counselors a break.
And that's a, his focus was on some key ones that are gonna give the biggest exposure. And understanding that, you know, everybody has busy summers and that, so if everyone can't participate, it'd be really nice to have a backup of a core group of people that will be there. And, and that way, if counselors can't make it, we still make a really good presentation for there.
Okay, anything else on Chris's? Okay, if not, move on to the fire.
So we, do we not have ambulances available again before we leave the community?
No, he just keeps, he keeps track of, so yeah, they did have first response to that, made him bid to assist the ambulance.
And I think that the advantage of keeping track of that one there too is because that was one of the ones that, you know, I think that the push was provincially, is that other municipalities are finding it. So, you know, that's what Tammy was talking about with Okitoks, you know, the EMS, the obvious issues are there because, you know, the cost, because the fire department's going, you know.
Well, it says no EMS in Vulcan.
Yeah. So one would come from somewhere else, but that means that first response would go.
Stabilize.
And stabilize the patient.
That's why we drive in ourselves.
Yeah. Okay, any question on Peter's? Okay, if not, somebody wish to move the administration. Judy, Judy, I guess. Any question on Judy's motion? Here we now, call a question in favor. Okay, looking for one more motion. Oh, Barbara, hoping. To adjourn.
You're smoking here, I usually here.
Okay, all those in favor, adjournment? We are officially adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody.